Opening the Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, meeting of the Air Planning Board. First item is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda this evening? Hearing none. All in favor of the agenda is written?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The first matter of business is 201, 205 West Main Street. This hearing is still in operation. We don't have to open it?
Correct.
We have a representative? Tom, just the usual, please.
Sure. Good evening, board members. Tom Gibbons for DMG Investment LLC regarding 201 to 205 West Main Street. So unfortunately, with my client's very disappointed, but we will be asking to withdraw without prejudice the site plan approval, site plan permit, stormwater management permit, and the application for the Aquifer Overlay District Special Permit. We had submitted some updated information in response to one of the members' questions, but I do understand that the board doesn't have the appetite to go into that. So with great regret, I do have a request that we be allowed to withdraw the entire application without prejudice.
Danny, what's required from us? Do we have a vote to?
Yes.
And what's the right verb to accept?
Would you like me to read this?
Yeah, but yes, please read it. But I just want to know, you're going to read it? But what's the, what do we call?
So the motion is to, you're accepting?
To accept the withdrawal without prejudice. Okay, great. So Jeff, please.
Got it. Thank you. From the Law Office of Thomas A. Gibbons, P.C., October 24th, 2023, Town of Air Planning Board, One Main Street, AR Mass., 01432, regarding DMG Investments, LLC, 201, 205 West Main Street, AR Mass. Our file number is 22-0118. Dear Honorable Members of the Town of Air Planning Board, please accept this letter as a request by the applicant, DMG Investments, LLC, to withdraw without prejudice its application for site plan review, application for stormwater management permit, and its application for an Aquifer Overlay District Special Permit, all related to the proposed project located at 201, 205 West Main Street, AR Massachusetts. If you have any questions or concerns regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Very truly yours, Thomas A. Gibbons, Esquire.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for acceptance?
Move to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
DMG?
For DMG, excuse me, for DMG.
I'm sorry.
DMG Investments LLC for the 201, 205, 201, 205 West Main Street Project, file number 22-0118.
Okay, which would, and if I may, a friendly amendment, including the special permit for?
Which covers the special permit for the Aquifer Overlay District. Yes.
Okay, all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
I guess I would ask, just in general terms, Tom, does this affect the work you've done before, the Board of Appeals, Conservation, so forth? So now those decisions, well, two of them will be recorded tomorrow, but the prior CVA actions were recorded, so they go until two years from.
Okay.
So now it doesn't adversely affect it unless they expire.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And Tom, I believe you're going to remain seated here because you are also the counsel for the second item on our agenda.
Oh, geez.
Well, oh, we have to close it, right?
I'd like move to close to 201, 205 West Main Street, map 32, parcels 14 and 15, Site Plan Special Permit, Aquifer Overlay District, and Stormwater Management Permit, applicant DMG Investments LLC, continued from 7/11/23, 8/8/23, 8/22/23, 9/12/23, 9/26/23, 10/10/23.
Any discussion?
Yes. So, Tom, what are the limits on your team, DMG, reapplying under, because you've withdrawn without prejudice?
So you mean, what is the likelihood or what is the?
No, not the likelihood. What is typically the, your rights, I guess, at this point in time? Yeah, so, so if it wasn't without prejudice, it could be considered a repetitive application, and we might have to wait for two years, but without prejudice, we could come back.
Anytime.
Yes.
Anytime, yeah.
Okay.
I will say that they're stung by it. I don't know that, you know, they'll be back, but.
Yeah, but I don't think there's any limit on how soon or how long they can come back, is how I would put it. Yes, that's good. Attorney Gibbons would agree, yeah.
Yeah. Good. Further, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Tom.
27, 29. That is already open?
That's already open.
That is correct.
And where are we on this?
I mean, Danny, you start, you lead us, Danny, and?
So this actually came up because of a comment Mr. Diskin had raised at a previous town planning board meeting about the zoning map. And so I had town council review the citizens petitions that were put forth at town meeting, the fall town meeting of 2021, and the spring town meeting of 2022. She reviewed the articles, and based on the articles, they don't, they don't have an exhibit showing the zoning map. So the zoning map being rezoned, showing the new zone of general business over, instead of general residence, was never adopted, which legally doesn't, legally makes it so that the parcels have never actually been rezoned. So when we had a meeting with town council last week, she, she said the best course of action would be to have the applicant continue to a time next year, so, you know, February, which would allow the planning board to be able to get a warrant article before the select board in that time. And then that February meeting would be used as more of a check-in to see where we are with it. After that meeting, they'd end up continuing to a date after town meeting of, once it's being adopted, of the, of the new zoning map, and then they'd be able to come back and continue the application. The reason they'd have to do, they have to do that is because the special permit that they're requesting is a use for enclosed fabrication, which is only allowed in the general business, not in the general residence. So that's what the biggest issue is about this.
So, so what I have here is a request to continue the public hearing to February 27th, 2024, and I've also included an extension for the board to act to March 26th, 2024, so it'll give us time to?
You said July?
To March 26th.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
So, and so, I'll submit that. So I'm not saying I agree or disagree with town council's position, but I see no reason not to agree to continue it.
All right.
From the Law Office of Thomas A. Gibbons, P.C., dated October 24th, 2023, Town of Air Planning Board, One Main Street, AR Mass., 01432, regarding 29 Harvard Road, LLC, 27-29 Harbor Road, AR Mass., 01432, our file number 22-8003. Dear Honorable Members of the Town of Air Planning Board, pursuant to a conversation I had with Mr. Daniel Ruiz, in which he informed me that the planning board will be sponsoring a warrant article for the Town of Air Spring Town Meeting for purposes of updating the Town of Air zoning map, which will update the zoning map to reflect the previous rezoning of the 2729 Harvard Road property, please accept this letter as 29 Harvard Road LLC's agreement with the board to continue the public hearing regarding 29 Harvard Road LLC's application for site plan review and special permit to February 27th, 2024, at 6:15 p.m. In addition, this letter will serve as confirmation of the applicant's agreement that the time for the planning board to complete the review process and to act upon the application is extended to March 26th, 2024. If you have any questions or concerns regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Very truly yours, truly yours, Thomas A. Gibbons, Esquire. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If you would accept this as friendly, I might suggest that you, that we specify in the second line it ends with, for the Town of Air Spring Town Meeting, would you want to say 2024?
Sure. Do you want me to write that in there?
If you don't mind, sir. Thank you. You know, in 15 years from now, someone will come back and?
Yes.
I hate to say it, Tom, but you know it'll happen. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So that's been edited to say town meeting of 2024, and he's initialed it as an acceptable change. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you.
So I believe what's necessary is a continuance?
I move to accept the letter of continuance from, and I can't see it anymore, I'm sorry, from 29 Harvard Road LLC for the lots at 2729 Harvard Road, file number 22-8003.
And does, I'm sorry, does that motion serve also as the continuance for the meeting, or just the acceptance of the letter of both?
Yes. Move to accept the letter for?
That does cover both? I just wanted to be sure.
Everything covered in the letter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, of course. The interesting twist to this is, for everyone's purposes, the fact that it was a citizens petition that was put in.
Yes.
And at the time, we, we coached as a planning board at the time to basically hands off because it was a citizen petition.
Yes.
And so we, but typically, when we request a zoning change, the language in the request includes the change to the zoning map.
Yes.
So it's, it's combined in both one motion when we go to town meeting typically, but this was a separate situation as a citizens petition, so it did not include that language.
That is correct.
So now you're asking us to, because we've got an approved town meeting vote for the zoning change, as a planning board, we need to sponsor that. It's not sponsored by the, by the citizens petition person. It's sponsored by us.
Correct. It's sponsored by us because we're putting the warrant article for the adoption of the la, the most updated zoning map.
Okay.
Correct.
Which could include their change or maybe some other changes that we made in the meantime.
Correct.
Well, the other ones, we assume, had the right language.
Yes.
Because this is the only one that's a citizens petition.
Yes, and that, so I've actually, I have been looking into, because the last time the town adopted the zoning map was in 2019. So I have been working on reviewing everything since 2019 on to see if there was any warrant articles that changed, that had some rezoning. There have been, but, so the couple that I've seen have all had a reference of saying by law and map.
Okay.
Which seems to cover us. And that's the, that's what the problem was here with the citizens petition. Town council, since it's a citizens petition, they don't have the, the town doesn't have the right to change it or review it or any of that. It goes as is. So town council never reviewed it. Had they had been able to see it, they would have added that language, they said, but, you know, that's what.
Okay. I would recommend if we have another citizens petition, that we do it, take the steps necessary to do it the first time.
Yes, so that's, so what would happen would be?
Learning experience.
Typically, I would probably meet with that citizens petition to just review it and talk with them about it, because we, we don't have the authority to really review it or change it, but we can meet with them to make sure that it's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we would do.
Yes.
That makes sense. Any further discussion? We did get a second motion, right?
Yes.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, Tom.
So Danny, for Stratton Hill, I don't think there are, there are no representatives going to be here tonight.
They have just requested a continuance to the November 14th meeting.
Okay, great.
We've not opened this hearing, have we?
We did.
Okay, good. So move. And they've asked for the continuance until November, November 14th? Thank you. Move.
But to continue, sorry, go ahead. My mistake.
To continue the off, Wright Road, Stratton Hill, map six, parcels 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, 11 through 55, definitive subdivision and open space residential development plan, applicant Fox Metal Realty Corp. and Molten Construction Corp. The applicant has requested a continuance to the November 14th, 2023 planning board meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second. Any discussion? Yes, of course. So for clarification, we took these documents and, and posted and advertised in a button notification for a meeting that was a couple of weeks ago. They never, they also at that time asked for a continuance to tonight. Now we're basically getting a continuance to the next. So that's why I think Jeff asked that question, because we really haven't seen, put the documents in front of us at the table at this point in time. We've reviewed them on our own and whatnot. But just for clarification, this is the second extension. We haven't, even though we opened the meeting officially, just to do, to be prudent, we got it open, but in essence, we still haven't discussed a thing.
Correct. Yes, yes.
I just want to make it clear. We haven't discussed anything.
Yes, we, we just merely opened the public hearing so that the, the hearing would be open and new information would be able to be accepted. We also, and we continued it to this meeting, and the applicant has requested another continuance. So there really hasn't been any deliberation from the board on this project.
No presentation, no deliberation. Have any other documents, have any other documents come in to, to the office? Or we still have the documents we got for the original?
We are still, so we accepted the response comments that they had submitted prior to the public hearing.
Okay.
We finally accepted those now that the public hearing was opened, but that's it. We haven't done anything else.
We haven't deliberated on any of those comments. We haven't, I don't even see, we haven't seen.
Correct.
Okay, so that's all we've got for communication.
That is correct.
At this point in time.
And I'm going to ask one question, and I know Attorney Collins, the attorney for Molten Group, unless you touch it, it goes off. It's okay. So I would ask, Danny, make a request that you just double-check that the, Attorney Collins is very good about extending the time for decision. I'm sure he has done it appropriately, but let's not fall into that trap if we can.
Yes, so actually, they extended to November 30th.
Yeah, thanks. So we just, and I'm sure Attorney Collins will be more than open to giving us more than 15 days, 16 days to work on the project.
I'm sure.
Yes. And we might, as a courtesy, you might just want, he's on top of it, I know, but.
We did, so when I spoke with him about the continuance for this, he, he did say that, he sent over a letter that's requesting the, the continuance of the 14th, and then also giving us an extension, which the town clerk has posted. And so she has it, but he did say that he will give us an extension for, past the, you know, November 30th, once we get to that point.
Thank you.
Through the chair. So when we receive the subdivision application, which we received, it's stamped in.
Yes.
The clock starts moving. So that's what, I think Jeff said, certainly, all of us have the same concern.
Yes.
So every time we get one of these extensions, our request for an extension, that automatically adds that number of days to the approval process?
So the way it works is the extension to the 30th, so in this case, extension from November, the last extension was October 31st. They moved it to November 30th. So the extension for the time to act is November 30th. That's your drop dead date for you guys to act, if they were not to give us an extension.
Another extension.
Exactly. And that's how it works with any application before the board. So when a, when an applicant is before the board for a longer period than the time to act, they allow you, they give you extensions to, but continuances also can act as extensions because if the applicant does not want to provide the board, I've seen occasions where they don't want to provide the board too much time, so they'll just say, we will continue to this date, and that's the extension of the time to act. So if at that meeting, the applicant does not request an extension, the planning board would have to act on that date.
Or request an extension from them.
Or request, if they don't, but if they don't, if they say no.
They don't offer it. We can ask for an extension.
Yeah. And if they say no to that, then the board, that's where you get to put in the situation where the board would have to act.
Right.
And I've seen situations where that has happened.
Yeah, because, you know, it can get constructively approved.
Correct. But it can, it could go to a point of construction, constructive approval should the board not act. And the sort of Damocles, if the board says no, it's a two or three-year period before they can reapply.
Right.
Correct. So it's, there's pressure on the applicant, too. It's not just a, just for the general population. If the board, if the board doesn't act, it's not necessarily constructive. That's?
I understand. That's correct, yes. Because that comes into the whole situation of if the board gets forced to act because, say, the applicant does not want to provide additional information that the board requested, that's where you get into the point of denial based on lack of information. That's, you know, things start getting dicey over there.
But you're keeping the calendar on?
Yes, I am. Yeah. And so what happens with, when they give us the extension of the time to act, that gets actually given to the town clerk, and she's supposed to post that as well. And she, so she's doing that.
Okay. So one was the original, so you're saying the original drop date, dead weight date was actually October 31st?
Because what happened was when they made their first submission in May.
Right.
Which was before I was on board, when they made their submission in May, they also gave us an extension to October 30th.
I think they went to 120 days with the, with the May.
So before they even started, they were?
Exactly. They were already giving us an extension. Correct. And again, this, we're working on a project that was originally approved in 2005.
I know that, but.
But I, and I know, I know Attorney Collins, he'll be fine with it. They'll get it done.
Yes.
But, yeah, I don't, you haven't been through the earlier rounds with this. I don't think there's any animosity.
No, no, no.
Good.
And he did say that they would give us an extension.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you very much, Danny. Yes.
All right. We have, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Danny, will you lead us on the 42 Park Street?
Yes, I believe we have.
Can we have the representatives of the applicant come on up, pull up the chair, and then we'll start with you, too. Yeah, come on up.
No, you use the comfy chair.
You use the comfy chair.
I'll sit on the ball.
Both have comfy chairs.
Just, just like usual, huh?
Both have comfy chairs.
Thank you.
And we just name and address?
Well, wait, we have to open the public hearing.
Oh, even before they do that? Okay. All right. Let's do that. Please do.
Move to open the public hearing for 42 Park Street, map 26, parcel 17, site plan review and minor stormwater management permit. The applicant is Ally Isak Goldenak.
Yep.
Thank you. Applicant being Ally Goldenak.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right.
I'll give you a nice little colored one to look at.
Oh, I like that. Okay.
Would it be easier to put it in that corner for you guys?
I don't know, the TV, you can see it with the camera. That's the thing.
Over here, perhaps? Barry, what do you think? To my right or to my left?
Yeah, there.
Right here, right?
Right there.
Right over here.
Right there, yep. And if you?
Over there.
Is that good, Barry?
Yep.
Facing the front of the room to the side.
Well, it turns up wrong so you can see it.
If you turn it so we can see it. He can pick it up with that camera up there.
Oh, perfect.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So just for record, Justin Leclair, McCarty Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant tonight for the project, that 42 Park Street. So I don't know how familiar everyone is with it, but this is the parcel that has the existing two-story, two-family home. That is, let's face it, in disrepair. It's adjacent to the laundromat, and then on the other side is the Jiffy Lube. So as part of this project, the applicant is looking to remodel the existing two-story, two-family home and add a addition approximately 2,000 square feet in size. That'll be two stories as well. The first story will be a commercial space that the plan right now is for a salon to go in there, and three apartment buildings on the second floor. Each one would be a two-bed, one-bath apartment. So if you don't mind, I'll get up and kind of?
Please do.
Give you a layout. So the existing curb cut is located here. We're maintaining it the best we can. We're proposing a drive out to come in down the back. We're proposing a dumpster pad here that'll be vinyl closed for the use of the facility. And then we're proposing nine parking spaces here and three up here, two of them which will be handicap. And they will be accessible. We're not proposing any curb along the sidewalk, so they can just pull in, be able to get out, and get right to the building. Then we're proposing curbing all on here, curving in here, and then walkway and stairs to get up to the facility. The reason being? Let's surround, so we can?
Does he have any slides on for the?
I'll put it up here.
You've got the site plan ready to go?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good.
Yep. So that's the layout. That was the colored one I just showed you. So this is the drainage plan. Just so you guys can see, we're at a finished floor, 224 and change, but we're down at 217 in the parking lot. So we just need the stairs on the back to be able to provide access for customers as well as tenants in the apartment to get in there.
It's about a seven-foot changing grade.
Yeah.
Plus or minus. Okay.
Yep. And that's how it is existing. So we did the best we could to match existing grades, limit the amount of effort that we have to do in here, limit the amount of fill as well. So in regards to stormwater, everything's being collected in catch basins at the back of the site. It'll be treated through manholes and water quality units, and eventually into an underground system. These are the storm tech chambers we're proposing. And you've probably seen on the site, the yellow plastic ones. So that is where our stormwater is being handled, as well as the rooftop runoff. So this has been designed to be in accordance with the master stormwater handbook, as well as the local regulations in regards to peak flows, TSS, water quality, all of that. Utility-wise, we're proposing to maintain the existing domestic and sewer connections that go into the existing facility and run those into the addition. As part of that, the contractor will look at the condition of those utilities. Who knows the last time they've been reviewed and what that. If between the contractor and the town and us, we deem them to be inadequate for the proposed building, we'll work in hand to either propose a new location for them or to try and replace them in where they are.
Can I ask you a question? Do you want to take questions at the end, or what do you want to do?
We'll do it at the end. Yeah, do it at the end. Let's go through, and just jot it down.
Yep, and I'll be happy to take in all at the end.
Going to be here a long time.
No, that's quite all right. In addition, we are proposing a fire suppression service that'll come in the main drive and connect into the canopy room. And then we're proposing to tie in, currently, it's an overhead wire from the pole across the street that ties into the existing building. Right now, we're showing a proposed transformer just because of the mixed use of commercial and residential. We'll coordinate with local utility company on if we need it, and, or if we can just have a large panel inside the building.
And if they do agree to a transformer, would you, are you proposing to stay up in the air or go down?
We'd like to go under, across the road. Just, it's easier.
It's easier than actually the future of Park Street.
Definitely want to put it in the road.
That way.
Yes.
Sorry to ask the question. I know, I realize what I did.
No, that's okay.
No, no, that's, I was going to mention that we would be proposing underground utilities to come across the road for the electric. In regards to landscaping and lighting, the architect has been handling that. He's currently in the process of working on revisions. Lighting will be typically dark sky compliant. I would imagine that we'd be proposing poles, possibly coming down the drive a couple in the parking field, and then wall-mounted fixtures on the building, typically at the entrances. And then landscaping, I'm a civil engineer, I'm not a landscape architect, so I don't want to speak too much to it, but I would consider a mix of trees and trumps and foundation would be incorporated into our design. We did receive a comment letter from the various town departments that was dated October 16th. We did put a response together.
You did?
I'd be?
Yeah, we just received it today, so I had, I didn't give it to you guys in your packets because the department heads and I haven't had a chance to review it.
Cool.
Um, I have done an initial review of the comments myself, but I know other departments have, will have some comments.
I'm happy to go through them. I do have it. If not, I understand. That's at the discretion of you guys.
We're not ready.
Okay. Nope, that's, in that case, I'll take questions.
Okay.
That's it?
I'm going to start.
Start with the easy question, will you?
So I'm going to start with an easy one. So the, the red house, are we, are we taking it down to the foundation? Are we rehabbing? What's going on with that for this project?
So the intent of the red house is to structurally keep it as is, completely demo the inside, redo the outside features. Obviously, driving by, you can see, siding's gone, everything. Actually, the, that'd be the proposed facade.
This is the, this has the front elevation?
That's the front.
It is?
Yep.
So if you're looking at it on Park Street, straight at it.
That's what it's going to look like.
Oh, it will, okay.
Yeah, that's what it will look like.
And I'm assuming if you want to see this, this is what it looks like. Retail unit at the bottom right there.
This is what it looks like now.
Through the chair. Did you see the architect with you?
No, he?
No, he has COVID, so he couldn't make it tonight.
Because I was thinking the architect might be the one to answer anything about the elevations and stuff, but if you can do it, fine, you know?
And thank you for leaving him alone.
Yes. In regards to the building itself, specific details, I would defer to the the building itself specific details I would defer to the architect but I would say that the design and construction of it would be in accordance with the zoning would be in accordance with the building permit process any plans fire suppression electrical structural will be stamped submitted to town in accordance with that building permit process so any issues that would come up then would be handled between the architect the contractor and the building commissioner
I'm gonna ask one more question and allow my patiently waiting but well there'll be more but I'll just and I forget the formal name of it but have you studied contamination in the ground yet
a twenty-one E
twenty-one E thank you
so a twenty-one E was not done on the site talking to my client here and the attorneys it wasn't done as as part of the dealings of the PNS there was nothing that we saw would have been an immediate red flag I did talk to my client about potentially having her attorneys look into it knowing where it is there's always a question of it but I would say in my experience more times than not we don't run into it but you never you never know
especially with this one with the clean it being right next door there definitely could be some some contamination on site I would highly advise you to do a twenty-one E it's gonna be it'll save you in the long run
yes and we did speak to that so I believe she'll go back with the attorneys and they'll be on their end in the event that there is obviously there's there's a risk in proceeding
yes
but um as of right now no one had brought up as a yeah you should definitely look into it
I'm going to suggest you should really look into it
but this is kind of out of order but can we condition a twenty-one E for a lot of approval
we cannot
we can't you've asked somebody about that
yes we cannot so we we don't have the authority to require a twenty-one E from the applicant that is not within our purview
okay I was thinking more of a liability issue for us if we approve a project that ends up being a problem
well so
it's a town liable for anything
no no so the applicant as as the landowner is responsible for it and they take up all the responsibility for it yeah so with a twenty-one E that's outside of our purview to require something like that
but I think they probably heard us by because they're right there
yes yes no I think they've they've heard us and it has it was a comment in in the comment letter
yes
would you excuse me would Danny be interested in going through his comments that are here that here let's
if you would yeah if you would like
before we start up
yeah
that is
yes yeah
since we had this before is what I'm getting at
yeah so the first one was is a variance required from the zoning board appeals due to the existing non-conformities so I actually spoke with Charlie today about this so in your initial submission to him when you had when you got your zoning letter um it was a different design in the sense of let me just pull this up sorry or let's see right here so in your initial uh design you had a jog here there was like a it came out from here and kind of jogged this way
yes
with this addition Charlie has um stated that you're going to need a special permit from the zoning board for that uh so we um he just reviewed it today based on 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 the response that you had kind of get that you guys had given us and so he was starting to review it that was his initial comment was that you'll need a special permit from the zoning board for this section because it is making a non-conforming law uh use more non-conforming or you're building within the setback which is not allowed uh so you need a special permit for that
that's because of the setback line is that vertical line
it's right there
okay
get rid of it I would like to speak to the building commissioner about my my interpretation was you're not increasing it
it so it's it's not making it more non-conforming
worse that was
but you're building within the setback which requires a special permit based on
instead of the variance
correct
okay
instead of a variance yes
okay
which a variance is much harder to
yes
to overcome which is why I raised this
yeah and that's when I saw the comment regarding variants typically if you're not increasing the non-conformity they let you go
yeah
if the town has a requirement for a special permit for that then that's fine
yeah
and that's much
it's much easier
yes
of a process
yes
yes it's not it's not as uh as difficult especially with how little of a area
yeah and it's just to connect
correct
the existing building to the addition and the constructability of it is much cleaner that way
yeah uh so that was my the first comment uh the second one was is there a driveway connection to the abutting property forty-fourth Park Street uh is there an easement or an agreement between the two properties so this is in regards to this section over here
yeah I was wondering that too
this right here so just so that everyone knows so when you do end up closing on this property you will be the new landowner and no longer it's not going to be owned by the same property uh same landowner for both properties which is how it is now so what would happen is you would need an agreement or an easement in place to have access between the two properties
yeah and excuse me so I did at least I did provide responses to yours
yep I did see that
so the idea and the intent behind this was there's currently existing drive that goes around from our proposed curb cut all the way around behind both buildings and out to the other side as part of this it was our intention to maintain that connection for to be good neighbors provide that just in the event that the abutter still wants it or needs it if that's ever sold or they decide they don't want properties in the back being connected we can easily propose a security gate there that would that could have a Knox box for fire department emergency access in the event that someone needs to get back there and camp from one side or the other for whatever reason
the only problem with that is because it's going to be owned by two separate owners it's no long the the way it functions now is because it's owned by both by the same person so they don't need to give themselves an easement or an agreement with her being the the potential new owner she will need to have that in place because the people who live there or work there don't have the
yep
ability to be able to use that access without an agreement or an easement
yeah
just something that you you're gonna want to make sure you have in place
yeah and that's as part of her dealings with closing if that's something that they do agree on great but as I did tell her that if for whatever reason they say no
then you can put something
we can put something there but at the same time we don't want to completely blockade it
yes
just like I said for emergency access in the event
so what I think one thing I would suggest would be just give us a uh show a detail of what could be proposed there to as a gate
yeah
just so that in the future you don't have to come back for a modification
yeah
and may I ask would you want a gate or would a shrub like planting that would not be in the way should a vehicle have to go through
I would say a gate because it's pavement it's going to be all pavement yeah so you're gonna want
do you want that connection there
doesn't matter to me is it does do you guys have a preference on if it's a gate or if it's an easement
get it out of there just put lawn there drive right over the lawn and
yeah something like that or or a paper a paper lawn the
crush gravel
something the only thing would be you would have to check with the fire department because there's no way to turn around
in that the idea I know the gate is to
yeah I understand
it's about the fire department basically
yeah there's exactly that's one of the bigger things
but once that building gets fully sprinkled it's gonna change the way they think about it anyway
I agree
and we've run into other projects in our towns where fire departments like no we want the access we don't want to deal with trying to go down there and do a sixty-point turn with a fire truck to get back out
and that's what I suspect is the you know would happen here too I think maybe it would be good to reach out to the fire department on this um and just specifically talk to them about it to see what they would prefer because I think that's going to be the more important thing
usually I would think that you wouldn't want that connection simply because people in the shop next door might just come zipping right out of this connection that you built a brand new driveway you know they take their motorcycles out there or whatever else they have
yep
I would think it might be not beneficial to you but I would just you know the fire department will come up some bollard system you can just put the bollards there that they could take off in an emergency or something you know it would give these folks a feeling that the the site is closed in and it's theirs it's not not the idea that someone can drive through my site
yeah
give them a you know this is our site we have control of it
and but remember if if you know if Ali wants to still maintain that access because I know it it's easy it's something that's already been there so people can use it I don't it's I don't think it's an issue to be there it would just need an easement
so do we have to see an easement before we can approve it
uh we could condition that
condition that okay thank you
and that'd be easy enough to put an exhibit from the surveyor to show that
yeah
plan from the guy next door and it's gotta be stamped
yes they would be legal documents and everything because it gets recorded and
all the fun stuff
yeah
yeah right it is a lot
the next one was the hours of operation and that was actually given to us I believe it's Tuesday and Saturday to nine to five
yeah through Saturday nine to five
yeah now some of these are from their responses which I haven't really given to you guys yet so just so you know the next one was about a possible intermittent stream in the back they provided a a letter from Oak Engineering was it
Three Oaks Environmental
environmental that's
yep
nope
you were close
it was close saying that they had done a review of the area and that there was no um no wetlands or stream in the in the area I do have a map that actually shows that there is a stream back there so what I'll do is I can send that over to you and actually the concom agent has it shown right there
um did you see the revised one from Three Oaks dated ten twenty-three I did send that
no I did not see that
so it just went and expanded a little bit more on what is shown on the GIS there
okay
um it's based on her site block it's more of a man-made drainage ditch so it gives the allusion to that but she said it doesn't flow in or out of any BBWs so
so there is that's the thing that's the problem with the plan so it if you actually look at the GIS it shows a connection goes underneath the railroad tracks and then on the other side there's a BBW that or maybe IVW
it flows all the way to the wetland behind the fire station
yeah so you might want to just
yeah I I'll circle back with her to confirm that
okay
what was it Three Oaks Engineering or Three Oaks
Three Oaks Environmental
environmental so the issue is whether or not that little intermittent stream connects with
yeah
whether it is an intermittent
exactly it's whether if it is an intermittent or wetlands
anything that's controlled by the WPA
correct number five is is talks about the outflow the
flared end
the flared end on the on the northern portion of the site for the overflow
yep
and whether or not that would affect the
yeah so now um tie in and to speak to that in regards to stormwater our preposts are less than existing so we are better in the condition we are providing that stormwater treatment so again we do meet those standards both locally and state stormwater handbook
okay six was snow storage on the site um so in their
right in the driveway
we can block the driveway
on the plans
just change it to snow storage and you're done
one of my comments was to show snow storage and I believe in their comment was the revised plans will have them
I did tonight I did start updating so you typically have some here we can show some here obviously we can go over the side of the burn there so there is adequate
go down the slope
yeah
the new slope
yeah and if we do decide to block off the end push it right to the end so
yep
that can be easily addressed
yep uh also on the there's a discrepancy between the architectural plans and the and your site plan
yep
one shows two parking spaces one shows three parking spaces obviously the updated site plan is more recent design
yeah
um so that just needs to be addressed
we'll coordinate between myself and the architect on what we're gonna use going forward
okay so you don't know if you're going three or two or
ideally I'd want to do three the reason being is two of them are handicap so then the third space can be used as load and unload area if you have small deliveries obviously with a salon there some products will be delivered at least there'd be a third spot there
yeah
and they're not parking in a handicap spot trying to make a delivery
the next one was about the bicycle accommodation from section nine point one point nine
drag that up while we're talking about that too so this is your site plan drawing
yes yes
yes and so the let me just show you what I I mean as
I know the other one I've got a lot between the two
okay okay
there's a lot of them issues
yeah there's a lot of discrepancies
but I wanted to just make sure we knew exactly what he meant by that
yes
because we'll get to that later as well
yes yeah
the next one was the bike bicycle accommodations for the racks and I believe the the updated plan will have that as well
yep actually if you look at this color graphic the baked hands to building the low tan would be your typical bike rack
okay my next comment was the landscape plan and the architectural plans should be stamped
yep
ten was the landscape plan should also have a chart showing the size of the installation of the the shrubs and the trees and it show and what the minimum requirement is
yep and the architect has seen the comment letter as well so
okay and then the last one I had was the applicant should submit a lighting plan which you already stated that you're getting updated or getting done
I notice this is a kind of left field kind of question but when you're doing lighting that's so close to rail there any special considerations there or it just it's just to treat it like an ordinary project
next to oh the you're talking about the train
yeah anything special there
not that I know of no
not that I know of
good
I mean obviously everything needs to be a dark sky compliant so it's all downward facing so it shouldn't affect it anyways okay good
especially for this site
just checking
yep but your foot candles would be zero at the property line should be zero at the property line
that's right
but in addition the rail is actually
is higher
is higher
yes
so that also helps with any spillage
good yes it's state laws requirement that foot candles is zero at the property line um and that's what I had I believe Ken has a
no I'm glad anybody else has any
Ken has a long list
always move along
I want to go home today so go ahead Ken I'd like to go home today go ahead Ken
okay
I did can I just one last comment before you
yeah
um so Ken actually raised this to me today so on the plot plan from Odonum surveying the it says that the Town of Air owns it but it doesn't it was actually owned by Francis Manone the owner the reason I think they have this incorrectly is because there's a tax taking that was put on the lien on the property it's a so it's a tax lien the town never actually took it or like in like you would as like land as a taking like that so that just needs to be corrected as to who the the property owner is it should be Francis Manone and that deed should be referenced not the tax taking just so that you know
the thing that was important to me is in the lower right-hand section where the stamp the surveyor's stamp is if you drag it up so he stamps it you know right recently and then right above it it says that it's the Town of Air
yeah so and that's that's the only reason it says that is because of the tax taking
it's hard for us to review a drawing that looks like that and not have a question that's what I'm getting at
oh so yeah because he did say via tax taking so he is referencing it but for the point of this ignore that recorded tax taking just state the property
yes state the property because the tax taking all it is is a it it memorializes the tax lien on the property which um was one of the comments actually one of the by the assessor or the tax office
yep
just to make sure that the applicant knows that there is a lien on taxes that needs to be paid for the property
he's going from the proceeds of the sale he's gonna pay the taxes off
and that's what I thought it was going to be I think that's what the agreement or that's what I was told but I just wanted to make sure you knew
gotcha
it would be difficult to get it re
yes
both jumps will happen at the same time
Nathan do you have anything
not this morning
alright so I guess I'll ask a couple of questions and we talked about the twenty-one E so I'm gonna start with the the building encroachment from the forty-four of that lot and the Ali I bumped into her today so I presume she's aware of it how do you guys feel that impacts your design should you just leave the encroachment there and live with it or do you want to ask them to demo that off your property
we're gonna grant them an easement at closing and update the deed
you are
yep
okay so when that's done I guess just as a question for the open space whatnot you definitely did not use any of that as part of your open space calculations you shrunk the open space
I'm gonna ask you a question just so we
that's the building in white right there
this white section here and this white section here is the This white section here and this white section here is the, is 44.
Dry cleaner, yeah, 44, yeah.
Okay, just so.
It just seems, it just seems strange to me that, you know, in general terms, as an apartment house, that you'd be that close to that kind of a building for residents and whatnot, that's just my own personal opinion, it's got nothing to do with the site plan, just a thought. So, one of the things that I've, I'm gonna, this is a little bit out of order, so just bear with me, because as I was looking through the plans, I was flipping the architectural and the site plans back and forth, because there's a number of discrepancies there, and I guess our question is gonna be is, who's responsible to coordinate the fact that those, if you give us a landscape plan from an architect, but I think we require a landscape plan under a site plan project, I guess we can take it from either a landscape architect, an engineer, or a regular architect, but someone should coordinate those two drawings so that they match up, in other words, what drawing is gonna be the basis for your project, so sheet three is what I'm thinking is your, the basic drawing.
Yes, this one here will be the base, so, give you a little bit of backstory on this. We were brought in as the second engineer on this project, the architect originally did have an our engineer. Due to unforeseen circumstances, he was not able to continue with it, and the design that we were left with was a basic architectural design, almost conceptual. So, as we started to dive into it on the engineering side, look at your drainage utilities, the real layout of it, we started to make modifications to make it work and to meet the applicant's requirements of, trying not to bring the site up six feet across the back to get everything where it needs to be, trying to match what the building was gonna look like, so what you see in front of you tonight is really the plan that provides the parking, provides the accessible handicap spaces, gives you access to the building, and provides adequate drainage. Where we can put it in a spot where we're not digging a giant hole, and we're avoiding the sewer easements, we're not impacting the existing sewer main that comes across the property from 44. So, there's been a little bit of disconnect, as we've been trying to play catch-up to get this in. So, as part of the comments, and myself, I did see some of the discrepancies, and I went, okay, we need to make sure these are addressed, so what you'll see as a final product will reflect this, be it, depending on if the board has any changes or additional changes come up, this might change a little bit, but the landscaping line plan will be, will reflect what we show here.
Okay, so, you're gonna coordinate at the landscape plan and the other plan, is it two, there's actually an architectural site plan as well.
Yes.
Yes.
Which shows some, so you're gonna make sure that those three plans match up.
Yes, correct.
So I don't have to go through the list, or should I, of discrepancies? No, okay, so anyway.
It depends how long we want to be here. You wanna just share.
So, start with the simple stuff, okay, we see the parking is different, okay? So let me, can you drag up that A3 or whatever, seat, whatever, no, your plan is called sheet three, excuse me. Okay, so, starting right there with the accessible parking spaces. Now, to the best of my knowledge, the van accessible spaces need to be about 16 feet wide. In other words, you've got about eight or nine for the van, and you have another eight for the hatched-off section that's next to it, which would bring you well out into the middle of that driveway.
So.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, in regards to these, with the way that they're oriented, you'll pull in, the doors will be on the right, that walkway will be flush with the pavement.
It still has to be like eight feet wide, right?
So.
In other words, we haven't seen this.
To be ADA compliance?
This hasn't, we haven't seen this before, that it works for your parallel park like that. It's always nosed in with a wide space on the side, so if you turn that this way, you now have an eight-foot requirement, I believe.
So I believe, so, this, the way this is designed now is, or the way this is kind of set up, this is allowed as long as there's access on the right hand, on the side of that space. Now, it's whether or not does the sidewalk as proposed meet the ADA compliance? Which is, you're gonna have to approve to the building commissioner as well.
Yeah, which we can as we go through the process to make, to make sure that meets the requirement.
And I understand where you're coming from, because I know on.
If there's a van parked in that parallel space, and that van has a outrigger that comes out like this, and a little elevator, a little thing that comes down, there's not gonna be enough room for someone to get a wheelchair off of that sidewalk, because the protrusion of the device will be in the sidewalk, I believe, so you'd have to show me more on that, how that's gonna work. Because I think you have a problem there. And for the two of them, which makes it even, so you're basically saying because of the code, you need two accessible parking spaces, one for the residences, one for the salon, is that basically the count, how you got to it?
Yeah, and the, so, trying to remember the ADA chart in my head, we might, you typically need one that's van accessible and one that's not.
Right.
So, we're, the easiest switch right now, just looking at it, where it says propose 9x22 accessible parking stall, put the Vantex under there, that gives you your adequate.
Give us more info on that, would, okay, that's my, that was my first thing. The, I'm trying to skip, this, this next one is just a general information. There's a zoning table on both sets of drawings, so there's a zoning table on the site, on the site drawings, and there's a zoning table on the architectural drawings. And it's a zoning analysis type of thing. So, they differ in a number of different ways, this, I don't have the architectural one up there at the moment, but if you put the architectural one up, you'll see that it's calling for a third floor in the building. Says you're gonna have two residential, two bedrooms on the second floor, and you're gonna have one residence with three bedrooms on the third floor.
That was actually a question in one of the department heads, and they actually did respond to that, and address that.
Yes.
So we know it's only on the second floor.
It's gonna be two stories.
But what I'm getting at is the drawing needs to be revised to match up, so if you look at the zoning table on the architectural one.
Response, is it a two or a three?
Yes.
So anyway, check, check the table to make sure that the, the numbers add up on the architectural as well as the.
If you go to, one more.
Yeah, the very first page.
There you go.
At the, that table. So, the table on the left, which he's got marked off as a.
The third floor.
Zoning analysis somewhere, right?
Yeah, there's a third floor shown.
The third floor, it says right here.
Yeah, that stuff is, isn't there also a zoning piece there, or is it?
So it's a zoning analysis, this.
Yeah, the whole thing.
Yeah, the whole thing was encompassing.
So, the open space on that analysis, difference from the open space on your analysis as well, it's got about 37% there, maybe, I can't see it from here, and then 50 or 51 on yours, so we need to straighten that out, because the open space is important. I'm gonna go, so if you, while we're on the architectural, and I said this is in a particular order, can you go to the basement plan, the very first plan? That, the.
This one, or?
Yeah, that's the one, right there, that shows the, whatever shows the basement, is that it?
That's the site plan.
Yeah, just keep going.
Site plan, architectural, landscape.
This one, right here. So, this again, there's a new architect here, so you're gonna have to hit a hold of him, but it's interesting that, see, the basement is, on the left, is listed as a crawl space, okay? And it's listed as being four feet below the first floor. I don't know if they want to build a crawl space or a full basement, number one, but on top of that, the problem is there's a door coming out of the crawl space, which would serve as an exit, it's marked exit right on it. And you can't, you'd be four feet high trying to.
Nope, that's.
Four-foot difference between the basement on the right, and the basement where the stair exit is, and the crawl space.
Yes.
Somebody has to get that figured out, I guess. I mean, I think you want a full basement, just guessing, but.
No, it's gonna be a crawl space.
It is?
Yeah.
Well, then you better figure out what that exit's all about and all the other stuff going on there.
Yeah, I think it would, ideally, it wouldn't be an exit, like a full door, but it'd be some sort of access hatch to get in there, but yes, that would be updated according to a crawl space now. So, we'll make sure that that's reflected by the architect.
Okay. While we're right there, again, now we have a set of steps coming out of the basement, as you can see, there's another exit from, this would be the only exit from the ground, from that basement level, because the other basement is entirely enclosed. So we have one exit from the basement, going up a set of steps. When you go to the next plan, the first floor, there's no door coming out of this basement to the first floor. Unless it's not shown and it's below those steps that are there. But there is no door to the basement at the moment for an exit that I can see.
From the in, from the inside of the unit, from the inside of here.
Yeah, from the basement.
Yeah, the access is from the outside.
Right, but if you, that's going up to the second floor, I'm coming out of the basement, I don't see a door in the first floor to take me out, I see a set of steps going up, but no door.
Right.
There's no way to get out of the basement at the moment.
So, I think what it is, is when you, so looking at this, this goes up, this up, and it's, this, this arrow's wrong. It's supposed to be flipping this way, going up this way.
No, wrong, that goes to the second floor apartments. That exit goes to the second floor apartments, as is the one on the top, and I'll get to that later. But for the moment, there's no exit from the basement.
Right.
Out of the building that I can see, that's clearly shown. So I'll scratch that off. We came through that, the table, open space differs, we talked about that.
This way.
Building encroachment, we talked about that. Driveway, we talked about that. Okay, so if we go back now to the, we gotta go flip back now, I'm sorry, to that three plan again.
Which one plan?
Three plan.
Well, we'll leave it there for a minute, let me finish with this, then we don't, then we'll have to go back and forth. So, if you look at the architectural site plan for a second, this one here. So, just, we're gonna go back to the other plan in a minute, but before we go back, you'll see there's an exit door on the north, and it goes to a concrete walkway, which you're gonna have to have for people to get from that exit to the parking lot.
To meet ADA compliance.
Yep.
Okay, that does not appear on your site plan at all, you have no walkway over there. On the south side of the building, where there's a concrete walkway, you'll see there's a V-shaped landscape planning area. There's none of that on your site plan at all. So, that's just, that all has to be cleared up, and to coordinate those two plans, but clearly, this guy's, this plan is not showing the retaining wall that you show on yours, on the end of that walk, because it's a four-foot slope difference or whatever it is.
Yep.
So there's quite a bit that's, you know, misshown, and it's easy to see that the parking spaces here are quite different than yours on the left-hand side. His parking space has got at least one or two extra on the left, way over to the left there, which would be the west. And the count comes out, I think, to 13, or 14, 13, and yours is different, so we know that's a piece bruised up.
The design over here doesn't match what you have as well, this.
Yeah, right, but the important, the important thing to me was the concrete walk for the exit and whatever's shown over the outside over there. Hold on a second on that one. Also, in the architectural, just FYI, there's no electrical room shown at all, so you can figure that out, what happens with that.
Yep.
Concrete blocks.
Just a reminder, when they do submit for a building permit, Charlie will do a full review of the architectural plans.
I get it, but. Gonna help them.
Yeah, 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 I just wanna, just make sure everyone knows that.
Okay, so, I met Ellie in the field out there today, and we talked about this, again, this is only the architectural, so I'll get back to your other one in a minute, but we have this up. If you go to the photograph of the building, you can see that the building is not very high in the front, and it's pretty shallow. So, I went out there to measure it, to see how tall it was, because it's not very tall. But when you go to the proposed architectural plans, and they show the height, you know, that drawing right there, you'll see that they're showing the first floor at 10 feet, one foot between the floors, and another 10 feet on the second floor. I don't think there's any way that that is gonna be without taking both floors apart, and she mentioned she thought you were gonna take the second floor apart and raise the roof. That's what you said to me, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the way I figure it, I think the whole building right now is very shallow, maybe only 12 to 14 feet high, maybe something like that? And this shows it to be 21 feet high. Which makes it match the rest, the new construction, and certainly, 10 feet is a great ceiling height for any commercial project, you know, like a salon. But I'm not sure how those elevations help show us what's gonna be the real elevation of the building, because they don't seem to match up to me, unless you are completely removing the roof and raising the whole thing up.
Hence my confusion at the start of the meeting, remember when I looked at that and said, oh, that's the front, because it looked too.
Too high. So, that's, again, for the architect, but I had it right here. So the original house, if this was not gonna be raising the roof, would have to be like a 21-foot-high distance from the ground to that same spot. And the same thing with the windows, it's evident, when you look at the windows here, and you know, the height of the windows and the glass.
You can see that the small window on top.
This is, whatever the age of the house is, they didn't dream about having anything that tall, so.
I mean, you picture the doors, that.
So that's just that. Okay, can you go back to the sheet three, your sheet, your sheet three?
First set of plans, please.
Alright, this is kind of a little.
Next sheet.
Yeah, the next one, three. So this, you're proposing to show us three things on this plan, the grading, drainage, and utilities, which I guess is acceptable, you know, typically. And, so, it looks to me like, the way you've figured this out is you're gonna drive from the street, and you're actually gonna go up a little bit to get onto the site, the speed is maybe six inches below than the new entrance to the building. It's like one, I think you're showing, what's it, 223, and it's two, and it's 224 in the parking lot. So now, instead of going down a hill slope quite a bit, we're gonna come up to a flat spot, which is good.
Yeah, so there's a, if you move your cursor a little bit more up to, down, a little bit, see that dash line coming across?
Yep.
Coming across. Yep, coming down.
That's the break.
This right there?
Yep, that's the existing 20, that's the proposed 24 contour that is on site.
Okay.
That's, yeah, there's an existing right here.
Yep. So we're.
Pretty flat.
Pretty much matching what's there.
We drive right in, okay, that's good. And the front of the entrance to the drawing, I think you have vertical granite curb on the, maybe on the south, I don't know if you identified it on the north or not.
So, yeah, I think that was a comment of.
Somebody made that?
Yeah, the DPW made a comment about the.
I guess I should get on the DPW.
Granting curving, you know.
Okay, so that's good.
If you guys want to look at this plan real quick, so as part of DPW's comment, we did add a hatched area here and here, showing what the limits that we'd be taking out and replacing. So pretty much, we're coming from the edge of the proposed sidewalk, all the way down. Where we're typing into the curb, that'll be replaced, so where that comes down, there'd be a ramp down, crosswalk, ramp up to the outside. So we did show the limits as, for a DPW comment.
But it is vertical granite curb?
Yes.
As you come in and in transition, and the rest of the site, is it Cape Cod burn, basically, but tremendous concrete?
Yeah, it's basically a bit concrete burn.
Okay, so now, if you look at your plan, you'll see there's no sidewalk up on the side of the building where the transformer is. Picking up that second egress from the second floor.
So, what you see where the stairs are, that would ideally, that was showing the door location.
For the second egress.
Yes, based on what we had, our understanding of where it was gonna be. Again, that's gonna have to be a coordination with the architect.
From the, when it was three stories or something like that?
Yeah, so.
The egress was in a different spot.
Yes, as, as part of the revised design, doors and egresses were changed, so.
This is now your second means of egress?
Yes. Again, now.
So that's gonna be there, as opposed to having that concrete walk in the back?
No, you can't get to it, because that's not the way the architectural plan lays out.
Well, so, that's what I'm saying, so this goes up to the second floor.
Can't get there, from, from there, you can't get there.
I know, what he's saying is that the architectural plans are going to be revised to match.
No, they're not, they're not gonna be revised, no. He's gonna move that set of stairs along the side of the building to match the door.
No, no, the architectural plans that were shown before aren't the new revised ones.
But the new revised ones will not give you the ability to put that there, because you'll have to go through someone's apartment, it's a bedroom or something back there. If you put the architectural plan up, you'll see that, so what's gonna end up happening is.
No, the architectural plan.
All of the architectural plans are going to be revised.
Yes, there's a revised set of architectures coming in.
You see on the floor, on this floor plan is not.
That's the first floor.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so this floor plan does not match what's going to be resubmitted.
Okay, cool. So you're gonna have like a corridor on the other side then, to get the other set of stairs?
Yeah, they'll have to, as a second means of egress.
That'll be coordinated with the architect to... Again, the discrepancies between the site plan and the architectural plans will be ironed out.
Working on it. Okay, so now back to whatever the other plan was again.
Site plan and the architectural.
Sheet three. You can flip back and forth, right, with the tab at the top?
Yes.
Yep.
So sheet three of the site plans, or sheet three of the architecturals?
Sheet three is his. A is the other one's. So, okay, where was it? Here. So now you have a retaining wall there at the end of that sidewalk, right at that spot there.
Yep, um, so the curb, curb ties right in to that little retaining wall, right in there. Yep.
So we're probably gonna have to show us something for that, what that is and how it's built and whatnot. Some structural element.
Yeah. For a wall, you can see top wall, bottom wall height, it's about four and a half feet and change. Usually, those are your typical modular block walls.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. Whatever you think it is, just put it on as a detail, put it on the plan. We know what it is.
And then obviously, you'll need a structural engineer to design it when you guys go for an actual building permit.
So under five feet?
I believe it's under four feet.
Is it four feet?
It's under four feet, correct.
I know I've done this back and forth before.
It's anything above that's, anything that's above four feet, it requires a structural engineer.
So if it does, typically, the contractor reaches out to the manufacturer of those walls, and as part of it, they have on staff that verify that design for what the wall will be.
And that, that'll be required by Charlie as part of the building permit for that wall.
Yep.
Okay. So that probably, that might need a handrail or a guardrail as well.
So there is one.
Yeah, you can see the X's.
Yeah, okay, I got it, that's good. Now, the other question I had was because of the grade change at the low, we see the lower corner, but your dumpster is down there. It goes from like two-twenty-four down to two-seventeen. Have you considered that we might need a guardrail down there, so it's coming, someone's coming across the lot and it curves? There's some protection for that low spot? Are you just gonna let it slope off?
So the way that goes, you're coming down and in. Away, so you're coming down and...
Super elevated over there on that side, you think?
Yeah, and the inside, we are tighter to get down to make grade. I think I was...
Better think about it.
Nine percent, in that.
You're at nine percent on there?
Yeah, I think I was nine or ten percent in that drive, just for that little short run to get down into the parking field, and then we flattened back out.
You may wanna look at that, because I believe ten percent, you can't go, you can't go any higher than ten percent.
Yeah, and I think we saw that and made sure we maxed the ten.
Okay, so just to make sure, you might, maybe if you can give us the, the exact slope, your slope percentage on that? Because, yeah, you can't go any, any more than ten percent.
Yep.
Okay, now I got a couple of drainage questions for you. If you take a look, you've got two roof leader connections here. Right here, and one there. That are pretty doggone close. Yet you take that one, the one on my right, all the way around the building. Does it make? Wouldn't it make more practical sense to you to consider going right around their front and connect with that one and go the right out, instead of bringing it all the way around? Underneath the walk and all that stuff?
So...
It's only one leader. I only, I only see one connection, unless you have multiple connections.
This is gonna be multiple connections. The way those roofs are sloped.
Okay.
One is sloped, call up and down, and one is sloped the opposite way.
Okay.
So that's what led to that type of layout. They would be gutted and downsputted, so there's multiple connections that are gonna be around.
Yeah, so you'll have this point, this point here.
Yes, exactly.
Well, that makes it even more tricky, because if it's in the corner like that, then he's gotta have some kind of detail where it goes below the slab and hooks in, I guess. Whatever, maintenance, you know, cleanouts and whatever you think you need, but... I was just trying to make it a little easier on you, but you can figure that out.
Yep.
And I believe the DPW made a comment on cleanouts.
Yeah, there was, they want to comment on the detail of the cleanout. We do provide one, they just want a little bit more clarification on it.
Okay. So as far as, so DPW probably talked about this, there's only those two catch basins on the very lowest, most remote spots. So we're saying basically that surface water is gonna run all the way around the building to those two catch basins?
Yes. And DPW did not have any comment regarding grain and drainage design, and they did not have a comment regarding the stormwater analysis.
Yeah, and I double-checked with them today, with Matt, to make sure that they were all set on the stormwater design.
Which begs the question of...
What about the testing for the subsurface?
That, that is one of the...
It's coming up.
It was a question of the DPW, and I know the, the applicant had requested that that be a condition, but I would, I would say no, just in my personal opinion, because the test pit's going to tell you your mean high groundwater, and you're gonna wanna know to make sure, make sure you can make your, um, your two-foot separation from the groundwater. And without the test pit information, you, you know, your design doesn't have all the information that we need. So I would say that that would be, I know the DPW has already, has requested it, and I would say that that, that should be done prior to approvals.
And we were gonna ask, um, the condition be prior to start construction. Just based on what's the surrounding soil types from research, we find it to be what we call an A soil, so it has a high infiltration rate. So anything that goes in, hits, it disappears. Typically, with those high infiltration rates, you see deep, uh, redox features. So just in our experience, what we do, where we're really here maintaining grade and actually we're filling a little bit, if I remember right here.
Yes, but just as a reminder, so this, this site was built well before stormwater regs were even around. So I would make sure you, so that's why it's important to make sure we get the test pit information, that you can actually meet that two-foot separation. Because if you do, if, and I've seen this happen, where you, that ends up being a prior to site, um, site work that gets done, and then you find out you can't make your two-foot separation. You gotta come back in for modifications to change the elevations and all that, so.
Yep.
I would, I would say that it should be done prior to approvals.
Is that reasonable, if we'll get someone out there and we'll poke a hole?
It's gonna be more than one hole, because I'm gonna ask you the same question, only it's gonna be more complicated.
So in regards to...
We have a requirement on our site plan regulations for test pits for under pavement and different areas of the site. As a prudent buyer, you'd wanna do borings, you'd wanna know what you're gonna build on, you wanna know if there's any stuff buried in the ground. I'm not sure if you, you said you've had experience with this, but I'm not sure how much experience you've had around this part of the state. So there are known things that can be buried in the ground.
Yes. So that's why we were talking about the twenty-one E.
Yeah, so that goes back to the twenty-one E. That is, you do the phase one. If they find anything that's a real potential concern, I'm actually dealing with this in Fitchburg right now. We got a phase one done. The environmental people came back and said, hey, we wanna do some GPR, and we wanna do some borings. We're in the process of doing... Yep, so we're in the phase two right now. In regards to stormwater test pits, the stormwater handbook required, asked you to do three typically. But based, that's based on size of your basin. If you have a giant basin and you have the room to do three test pits, they want to see three. For a system like this, where it's tiny, we typically will do one in the middle. If a town is, or the review engineer or someone is very picky about it, we'll offer two. The reason being is if you try and do three in this sized system,
It's all gonna...
You're gonna just ruin where you're gonna put the system. Yeah, you're, so they want, typically, they wanna see three, but they are reasonable. In this case, I would say test pit, that's fine, we could. I would ask that we do one just to keep that area as virgin, undisturbed as we can prior to going in and installing the system.
And what I would suggest would be reaching out to the DPW, just to, Matt, and seeing what, how many test pits they would like to see there.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure they'd be, they're not gonna say three, I know that, because of how small of a infiltration system it is, but it's possible.
Yeah, and that's an easy enough conversation to have with them prior to going out there, and I don't know if you know, do they typically like to be out on site to see these, or?
So...
Just my photograph evidence says.
Yeah, so I know so, so some towns require, um, someone to be present from the town.
Yep.
Some towns do not.
Yep.
I would have to double-check on that to see what our requirements are on this, but I would just reach out to Matt and, and, and see if he would like to be...
I can have that conversation, I mean, that's not a problem.
I, I, I have a few from this experience here, they are very hands-on.
Okay, and that's absolutely fine, it's just...
They're very reasonable.
It's just to make sure. Yeah, it's just nice enough, because...
They're very, they're very reasonable, very hands-on.
Yeah, we, we have some towns that just go, oh, where's the soil log? Okay, you're good. And then some towns are like, you're coming out this day, this time.
So if you guys are done talking about test pits, I actually wanna ask a question back. So can you just back out a little bit from this, so you see the whole? Okay, great. So we were having a discussion about the corner from the south side of the building, as you go around the building, so you're driving around the corner. Just in front, between the building and the, um, uh, pad for the, uh, no, down to the left.
Where the dumpster pad.
The dumpster pad. So you have two or three at this point, storm drains in the back, it looks like, or two, and you're working, and you're thinking about using sheet runoff as the way to maintain the water we maintain, maintained by the bituminous curb, and it will, sheet action will come around. You were discussing the ratio of your, the pitch back there.
Yep.
Um, what happens in a rainstorm, and it gets real cold real fast in February?
So...
You just put down lots of chemical? I'm just asking that question.
No, 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 and we're getting a lot more of these questions based on the intensity of the rainstorms, ju- just for what's going on in the world.
Look at it this way, I've been doing snow removal for thirty-two years professionally. I know the answer, you don't wanna hear it. Just keep sending back the sander, I'm sorry to say.
Yeah, and...
So, and, and we're, and we're, you know, we'd like to see people getting away from chemical applications, salt, straight salt applications, things like that. We don't have it in our bylaws yet, how to handle that. Massachusetts is actually looking at it, I'm sure you're aware of this, going through the brine type solution and stuff, but anyway. I would just ask, from a safety standpoint, from having a building with tenants, you end up with a parking lot that has a flash freeze situation, and you're using sheet runoff in a heavy storm. You might think about it.
Yeah.
And so there are, uh, you know, but, uh, safer de-icing chemicals that you can use, you know, magnesium, magnesium-covered, uh, they have like these magnesium pellets, so it's called MagSafe. And there's, uh, different types that you can use that are much safer, so it's like they have the magnesium covering it. So it's slower breakdown, as opposed to the quick breakdown that normal, you know, salt rock has, and so it's, there's different options you can use.
There are, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that this is not a managed building, especially during snowstorms. It's probably a vendor coming through on a regular basis, trying to keep up with the storm and at the end of the storm. And then you've got a sunny day, and you've got sheet runoff on it, and then four-thirty in the afternoon, it drops below thirty degrees again. So it...
It's just something for Ali to make sure to, you're gonna wanna figure out, property management-wise, snow, who's gonna be handling and the de-icing.
Somebody comes home after a night out, and they're wearing the wrong shoes, and they're walking across to get into the building. Yeah, we think about this stuff, but anyway, it's just, so, thank you, I didn't mean to jump in, but it would be me, wearing my loafers.
So getting back to the drainage a little bit, so you just explained that it might be an eight percent slope, let's say, down that, down that driveway. Velocity of the water is gonna wanna, it's not gonna wanna send that water up to that catch basin, it's gonna go right where that arrow went.
Yeah.
Right to that, shouldn't a catch basin be over there, rather than up to the right? You'd have to pitch everything a long ways to get it up that, just, I can't see it getting over there.
So I, I know, so I know, based on my review, and I, I know Dan looked at this as well, and Dan and Matt looked at this, they didn't have any issues with it. Uh, you know, just looking at this, if it does end up going straight this way, the way they have it sloped here, they have it pitching back towards this way. So it should avoid this overtopping and going over this way. It should, it should come here, and then it'll go, it'll follow along here or go this way.
Yeah, anything that goes down that corner will run along the curve.
Yeah.
And in our field, we typically, when we look at drainage patterns, we say, water runs perpendicular to your contours. So the way those contours are pitched, the perpendicular path is back to the middle.
Right, I see the high point there, yep.
Yep, so...
That's what I'm saying.
And that's why I propose...
You gotta get over it.
But it'll get, but it will get over there.
So no, 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 so this is not the, this is not a high point. This is actually, this is the two-eighteen contour, this is two-seventeen, this is two-nineteen. So what would happen is the water would go this way, and if safe, it does have that much velocity, it would hit this corner and then follow the, the concrete.
It, most likely, it would follow along there, or the curve down to the catch basin.
Correct.
And that's why we're proposing curve there.
The catch basin at the very end?
This one down here.
Okay, got it.
And that catch basin's at the lowest point on our site to catch anything that doesn't go to the catch basin at the corner of the parking field.
Okay. So basically, everything on the left is gonna go to that one on the end, and everything on the right's gonna go to the one in the corner.
Exactly.
So that might help prevent an icing situation. Okay, thank you. This is really a technical question that has to do with, what is it? It's the OCS one, which comes out of your, you know...
Yeah, OCS one, right there, yep.
So just enlighten me here, because I'm probably wrong, but the invert out is higher than the invert in.
Yep, and that is purposely not...
Clean the water or...
So as part, yes. So as part of our design, we have to provide what we call, uh, call wire quality volume.
Yep.
Typically, the way you do it is, inside your structure, you have the pipe that comes in.
Yep.
And you have a weir.
Yep.
And depending on our design, the weir has holes, it has slots, or it's just a solid piece of concrete that the wire hits, flows up, goes over. In situations like this, where the site isn't this, that large, we use the elevation difference between the pipe coming in from the system, which is the two-thirteen-five invert that you see. And we use that, and then the elevation difference of the invert out to make up that wire quality volume.
So that the sediment drops before it ever rises?
Exactly.
It's almost like if you had a hood in the, in the...
Yeah, and this is the cheapest way to do it, that way you're not by a structure that needs to be outfitted with weir.
I like that word, cheap.
Well, and...
Cost efficient.
Cost efficient.
I heard it cost efficient.
Yes. I actually had, and we, myself and my supervisor couldn't believe it, we had another engineering firm that couldn't understand the practicality of this. And we had to sit there and draw it out for them, and they went, ah!
Yeah, what kind of...
But it serves the purpose of the weir, without physically having one in there.
Okay, now, see the flared end you've got there?
Yep.
That's kinda close to the property line, and I don't know exactly what's going on there elevation-wise, but would it be prudent to aim it more towards your property in case some wanted to scoot into the next property?
And we can easily kinda twist that back at an angle a little bit. Where it is, is approximately where that drainage ditch is, so we're trying to...
There's a drainage ditch that kinda comes in here, which is that question, whether it's a intermittent stream or not.
So we're just trying...
It's a technical thought, that's all.
Yep, but the, um, the thought process behind that was, when you look at the site as a whole, everything goes from, in this case, the bottom right-hand side of the page, to the top left-hand side of the page.
Okay.
So where we put that flared end section is where everything's going. So we're not trying to divert or change the natural flow pattern of the site.
And the detail on the subsurface drainage system there's, got a lot of detail to give us.
That will be provided, that was a comment by DPW.
By me, too. Because there's nothing on the drawings right now that shows it.
No, there, there was one done, I think it was originally in, and then taken out, and then...
Okay. Okay.
It was meant to be put back in, but like I said, those are what we, we spent storm tech chambers, like I said early in the meeting. They're the yellow plastic chambers, so you'll see six inches of stone below it, you'll see the chamber, you'll see stone above it. And then you have your fill that comes back up to grade.
Is this the cleanout?
That's the inspection port.
Inspection port?
Yeah, and that'll be, that's detailed in the typical detail sheet, yep.
And that was, that was the response to DBW's comment.
Correct.
Okay. It looks like that's what I've got, thank you.
Anywhere else?
I was just thinking about the difference in size of the stormwater management here, Ken.
Oh, God.
This is Katania.
Yeah.
The tubes are eight feet into your diameter.
If my colleagues don't have. Eight feet? They ended up being ten, I think.
We actually, they're talking about millions of gallons of runoff that's coming off the hill to their response to their, yeah. We, we have a little experience with those, sorry.
So if I, if my colleagues don't have any further comments, do you, you do, go ahead, Nathan.
First, I wanted to thank the applicant for bringing this to us, I think it's a really good opportunity. Um, one thing that I really appreciate is to have two-bedroom apartments. A lot of applicants come with one bedroom, um, but I think the town does need a blend of, of apartments. So, um, you know, I really commend you for doing that.
Thank you, I'm actually a real estate agent and they rent better, so that was a bold process.
Interesting, I, I would've thought the one bedrooms are more profitable, but, uh, good to know. And and also have a business, you're, you're just outside our form base code. So I actually, I actually like that there's a existing non-conforming that pushes the development up to the street without, without having the, the variance needed. Um, I think it's gonna, as we get that, that form base development to go down that corridor, um, just starting after your, after your property, I think this would be a nice lead-in to, um, to what we envision for the future of a park street. The, um, we just wanna look, I mean, we don't usually get into the architect, but just, just, I'm assuming the first floor, there is a way for the employees to get in the back door into the business and not go out that side door. Just don't want the employees having to walk up that hill, uh, especially in the winter.
Oh, you mean with, from the parking, parking lot that's over here?
Yeah, yeah.
Access to get into, how to get over here?
What's in the side?
So there's the side door right there by the.
Side door.
By the mechanical room?
Yeah, right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Right, which would put them in the danger zone of walking up that eight percent grade. But if, if indeed the, well, it'd be preferable for them to, to not have to come up that hill.
And remember, these, these, the architectures are changing, so we're basing these comments off of what we have here.
And the planning board doesn't usually get into this much detail in architectural plans.
But what you've talked about is down our alley, you know, if someone has to walk there.
Yeah, that's your next us, we can definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, yeah, so I appreciate the, well, even if it's an error, that we get more detail than, than normal, which is, which is good. The, I'll make one more architectural recommendation, uh, I think outside of our purview, but I noticed that the two roof, uh, the two roofs don't connect, they create a valley, which just seems to be a maintenance nightmare, right there, right, yeah, Danny. Usually you don't want to have that valley to catch debris and water. You might wanna bring those two roofs together, um, that's just a suggestion, not really, uh, planning boards purview. You know what I mean, the, having that valley there is just gonna collect leaves and garbage.
Think of the word for it, but you'd want to build that.
So, um, just a professional recommendation.
So it comes down, it comes out.
While we're on the exterior, I don't, I also, um, it seems like there's gonna be some color coordination, you know, there's a color call-out for a band around. And then the, the front profile looks like it's going to be, uh, it's gonna have some street appeal again. It's, you're not required, cuz you're not in a form-based area, but I do really like having all that glass on the, on the first floor. It's going to blend well with what the, the future is going to look like, so if that stays, um, again, um, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The, the last, uh, the only, I think that's really, um, question is with forty-fours, uh, so if you look at the, yeah, the, the civil, um, do you get any shed off a forty-fourth roof onto your property?
Yeah.
And do they control that?
Did account for that. Before I say that, I wanna give you that.
Yeah, it's a good touch.
You might get the Kansas County Award for tonight.
Yeah.
Wow.
You get the good kindness corner.
Caught something candid in?
Julie might still have.
Everyone gave the nod.
Nobody could.
No.
So.
I'm gonna have to create something.
Um, I'll speak to it, speak to it if you guys wanna see it as well, walk around, it's just a little half-sized figure of it.
So you did account for it?
Yeah.
You did, okay.
So this is our entire outer boundary, which we did include their rooftop, not knowing what it did.
Not just the part that's in you, but you may, you may actually catch stuff from their property.
Exactly.
That comes into your property.
So in regards to their.
I don't know which way they pitch.
Yes, and there's only, when we look at, there's only so much we can take into account on ours. Though that building, I go by it, I kinda look, it looks like their wire does go somewhere. But the way that we did it was, okay, everything that comes onto our property will manage this, but everything else is being maintained as an existing condition, so it has a non-factor to our model, cuz we're not doing anything to it, so just, I'm gonna use big numbers for the example. Let's say whatever's over here way off property accounts for a hundred CFS that's going onto our property. Well, as part of this design, that hundred CFS is still coming, but we're mitigating what is on our property now. So it's still gonna be less than what's there now.
Yeah. Interesting, so you know, you have an estimate of what's on your property, assuming you're getting sheet runoff from them. And you've accounted for that.
Yeah, the only thing we accounted for was the building that is on our property. It just, we wanted to be, the area wasn't large enough that's gonna cause a detrimental change to our model. And to be conservative, we just said, it comes, we'll handle it, we'll treat it.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably the appropriate, um, response is that you have excess capacity.
Yes, and there's other, um, projects that we do where there's a giant watershed way over here that eventually comes here, but we can't account for that, but that's not changing. So as long as we're mid, we're bettering what we're doing for work.
Right.
That won't have a detrimental effect, cuz it's not gonna change.
It's a stormwater, you know, man, the stormwater standards, as long as you're not exceeding pre and post, as, as long as pre and post match or less, you're fine.
I understand your point, Nathan.
Yeah, and it's.
And that's, that's.
And there's always so much we can do, and that's why, like I said in this case, we did consider the building that is on our property, cuz we could've easily drawn the boundary at the limit of the building and said, yeah, we're not, we're not concerned about that.
Okay.
But again, to be conservative, we're saying, not only are we taking that into our peak consideration, we also include that in our wire quality treatment as well.
Good. I'll just throw one more suggestion, um, you have a nice south-facing roof, half of that new, new building's gonna be south-facing. Even if it's pitched up a little bit more, but even as it stands, it's a really great solar field. And I'm sure there are good incentives to help cover the cost of offsetting your electric. If you would put solar on that, uh, south side.
And one thing to touch, to touch on, so that he's talking about solar with the new building codes that have been put in. Also, make sure you guys account for the EV stations that.
To be EV-ready, correct?
Yeah, EV-ready.
So to make sure that that's.
I think it might be both.
I, I believe so, I think solar-ready as well.
Yeah.
Based on the new building code.
That would be base for the roof in regards to the EV-ready, we can easily show on this plan a conduit in a spot that could be deemed EV-ready.
Yeah, cuz that'll be required by the building department, so you.
Yes.
They won't issue a building permit unless you.
We're, we're in the final steps of another project now and that just got tripped for us, really. All right, but it's easy enough to show a conduit that can be installed and just, it's there for the EV when it's time to be installed.
I got a couple, so I got a follow-up to Nathan's, which I thought was very good. So see where the, your back driveway is that we talked about quite a bit, and it's very close to the corner of that, that building, right there. Should we be putting some protection right there, so nobody drives into the corner of that building? Where it protrudes? Cuz that's basically the total width of the driveway, right, from the building to the curb on the other side, twenty feet maybe?
Yeah, and.
For safeties, I think you should be doing some protection in that corner, but on top of that, I think Nathan had a valid point. If that roof over there were dripping, having a problem, it could ice up your driveway, just dripping off and freezing right down there.
So.
Gotta figure out a way to treat that as though it is your problem, uh, you know, get them to straighten it out if it is a problem, someone should at least inspect it.
You mean this right here, this area?
If this is the roof of the other building.
Yep.
And that drips this way, it's gonna drip on his pavement and freeze it up or something, or if water's coming off this roof. I think what, you know, Nathan mentioned is valid. And the other, at the same time, that catch basin just dawned on me, could it be taking any water from the site next door that you didn't calculate for, if it just runs across the other parking lot and right into it?
So based on this elevation, this is two-fifteen-eighty-eight, so it looks like it's pitching down that way.
Okay, let's.
But I, yeah, but we don't.
No, but you are right, if you look at that rim where at two-sixteen-five, and there's a two-sixteen contour that ties around.
Okay.
So on the backside of that catch basin.
It's high.
Their, their water's staying away from that.
Okay.
And anything comes, that's coming off that roof again, is being directed towards that catch basin.
Yeah, anything is gonna pitch.
Everything's being pitched that way as well.
Yeah, here's two-seventeen, here's two-sixteen.
But the current driveway now is further from that building, isn't it?
So where the catch basin is, you see that EOP?
Yeah.
That's the left edge of pavement for that driveway.
Okay, okay.
The right side of it pretty much runs right to the building.
Okay.
Which is where that dark line is, but if the board would prefer to see.
I don't know, just.
A bollard at the corner or something there.
I think there should be some protection.
That's easy enough to show there, just to provide something. And again, circling back to department comment, and if fire department says we don't want that, we'll gate it and we don't have to worry about it, cuz no one's gonna drive there in, in the event it's an emergency. And at that point, I would hope fire department would not hit the building while they're trying to. Ideally, the gate would probably be in that area.
Yep.
So they would, should be able to avoid any concerns there.
Good.
Would anyone, Julie, you know, Julie and Jeff, do you have anything?
Oh, that's very thorough.
Would, and did, did, uh, anyone in the public like to make any comment or ask questions? Or, I just wanna open in case you did, come on up.
I just have nothing to say, I'm Ali's dad, so I just appreciate everybody's input, and I think you all pretty thorough, and I'm grateful for all your time, that's all I wanna say, thank you.
Thank you, Ali's dad.
I just wanted to ask, all right, so, uh, we need a continuance?
Move to continue, excuse me, I put my glasses on. Um, do you think revised plans will be in, uh, how, how long do you think it's gonna take you guys to get revised plans?
When, when's your next meeting?
So our next meeting is the fourteenth.
Yep.
Um, and our, uh, deadline is, uh, five days prior to the meeting, so that's the Wednesday before.
So this upcoming Wednesday?
Yes.
No, it's ten days out.
No, ten days.
You have three weeks.
Oh, yeah, we have an extra.
We have a three-week window here.
We have a three-week window, yeah, we have an extra week in there, cuz it's a five-week month.
Huh? It's a five Tuesday month, yeah, that's why. So we're all over meeting with.
One final thing, I guess, just before we leave. You're showing your lot line as being a straight line, right? I just picked it up by opening it up.
So if you go back to the, um, if you can scroll to the survey.
Yeah, the survey.
Um, so he has.
There's a parcel two there.
There's a parcel two line there that juts in, that I think was supposed to be part of the existing building situation there. But the solid line that's, uh, you can see dimension one-oh-two-point-seven-one.
Yep.
Kinda next to the forty-four, that solid line that runs back is the property line based on the surveyor's research and recorded deed. And that's where the meet and bound and, uh, dimension comes from.
Why do you ask, Ken?
I see you quite a bit different from our GIS shows, which I know is not perfect, but the survey is the survey, but it, it does make a big difference in the way the thing is shaped.
Oh, wait, can I see that?
Yeah.
The way you have it.
I got it the wrong way. See the jog that comes down and goes back out, and it's got three or four dimensions on it.
I wonder if the GIS is picking up the parcel?
It's possible that they're picking up the parcel, yeah, that's, that's what it looks like. So when you look at it, it looks like if you, if you go straight across, it's parcel two is, so.
I don't know.
What you're missing is this, I drove, I drew in those lines on my vehicle, share with.
It's a long ways from that.
That's, that's that jog that, the, the in that you see on that, is this.
You just don't realize how much of that building is on there until you see that.
Yeah, and it's actually, this plan looks so much different than when you stand in front of the building and look at the distances. Yeah, because, yeah, exactly. I, I love the, I mean, this is a great.
Good exercise.
Yeah.
All right.
I think we need a motion for continuance.
So.
They're trying to figure out time.
All the time?
So what we'd like to do is, um, if we can request a continuance in November fourteenth meeting, I'll be in touch with you if there's anything that.
If you need to continue after that, that's.
Exactly, I'll request one at that time, but we would like to try for the fourteen.
And as you noticed this evening, you sat through multiple continuances, it doesn't really upset us, we'd rather, we'd rather have you sit here for an hour, I mean.
Yeah, no problem.
I don't want us to come out of the chair, but we'd rather dig in and have the stuff here to dig in on.
No, this was definitely of the more recent one planned meetings I've gone to, it was just nice to sit here and dig in about it instead of getting, oh, here's our three comments, okay, see in a few weeks, so this was very beneficial.
With that being said, I'd like to move to continue, the forty-two parcel sheet map, twenty-six parcel seventeen, site plan review and minor stormwater management permit, the applicant is Ali Goldenak, until the next planning, air planning board meeting on November fourteenth.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Shavuot, hi. Excellent, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate your time.
Well done. Well done. Project status updates, my friend.
Uh, before we get to that, why don't we discuss, actually, we'll do that after, the, the twenty-eighth of November, end of December, but we'll talk about that after.
Yeah.
So project status updates, um, so there's one, the, the big one is, uh, Shakemel Pond. They have started their, um, process of street acceptance. They wanna meet with, uh, with myself, Dan, Matt and Heather, just to go through some open items. Uh, I did review the decision and sent them a list of questions that I had that's, that were regarding some of the special conditions and general conditions within the decision, uh, they're, they're working on addressing those comments. And, um, so hopefully we should be able to meet sometime either, uh, this week or next week with them, just to kinda go through. just to kinda go through open issues, because the DPW wanted some extra time to be able to review the process, the, the project and the decision, and see what, what questions they'll have. So that's, we're in the process of that. Littleton, the Curly Circle, just so the board knows, we did enter into an MOU. And in addition to what we had originally talked about as, for open issues, after we, at our, after our last meeting, a, one of the residents had requested that we meet them out there, because they wanted to discuss some, some issues for, about drainage patterns and stuff. Most of those were addressed, there was one bigger issue, which Dan actually touched on at last night's meeting, town meeting. There is, so when you go out at Littleton Road, where their entrance is, and where, if you're going towards four ninety-five on that, on.
Heading east, heading east, yep.
There's a little section of that road where it's flat, well, it's not flat. It's pitched just as the driveway entrance of theirs, and then it's also pitched on the other side. So it's pitching towards to a low spot, and what's happening is, there's no curving there. So it's all, you know, just swell country drainage. And what's happening is it's pooling at this low point, and then going back between the sides of the, along the property line, between the owner to the left and the subdivision, or the, the OSRD that we're talking about. And what's happening is it's, it's actually scouring and carrying sediment all the way down, goes under someone's fence, through someone's yard, back to the, that little extension. So if you're going down that into Curly Circle, off to the right, there's that little driveway to the, that accesses that extra house on the right-hand side. What's happening is, it's going all the way down, carrying all the sand, and it's pooling sitting on that driveway. Carrying all this.
We talked about that with this one.
And so what's hap, and, and there's nothing, it's not their fault, it's not the, it's, Mass DOT does not have any drainage there, there's no catch basins there, there's nothing. It's just the way they paved that road happens to have one ridge here, one ridge here, where it pitches to the middle, and nowhere where the water can go. So what's, where it's going is path of least resistance, which is through the person's yard, and just carrying everything through there. So, there was actually a video of one of the residents that they showed us on a heavy rainstorm. It was a, a river of just sediment, and then once it gets to that last driveway, it just all covered in sediment on the floor, on the, on the driveway. But the, but what happens is then the water hits the grass, and then it properly goes through the swale and meets the detention basin in the back. So the issue's not the water, it's where it's carrying all the sediment. So, part of the MOU is for the developer to address that. And, their meeting, DPW and him talked about options on how to address it. I don't know what was agreed on yet, because they haven't formally figured out exactly what they're gonna do. Possibilities are, you know, having a berm along that side of the road, which would then allow the water to kinda carry along that berm, and then to that catch basin towards, towards that driveway that way. Some other options would be riprap along that area to kinda slow down, so there's no scouring. So there's a couple options, that's part of the agreement. And they have to do that prior to the town actually observe, you know, accepting the full, the road. Because yes, town meeting accepted it, but the town has, the selectmen have a hundred and twenty days from the approval to actually.
And the select were made aware of this before the town meeting?
Yes.
So, so they didn't, they didn't decide to pull the warrant article?
So, just wanted to update everyone on that, because that happened after the meeting, that we had talked about the street acceptance.
The over one-inch ring we got in less than two hours a few weeks ago?
Yeah, so, it was, it's, it was definitely something we did not expect. Other than that, there is going to be an A and R coming before the board at the next meeting for thirty-three Third Street. That's, that's a proposal that's gonna be on for the board for the next meeting. And, trying to see if there was anything else. There is another property, seventy-one Sandy Brook.
Sandy Road.
It's a, they've gone, they did, they did a submission for ZBA for a two, two family houses. And they have a plan that's before the ZBA and conservation, but they have not come formally to the planning board. They have to do an A and R.
Yep.
And so they have not done that, but they'll, they should be coming to us with that as well. And, that's it for right now.
So the Marshall Street, oh, excuse me, Third Street, thirty-three Third Street.
Yep.
Have you got that yet?
Yes, we did receive that, and they'll, they'll be on the November fourteenth.
So you can send it to us or whatever?
Yes, yep.
That's all I had. Is there any other projects that you guys may want updates on or anything?
May I make two comments?
Yes.
Wait, just wait, quick. Did we need a continuance for forty-two Park Street for the next meeting or no?
We did it, we did.
We did already?
Yep, that's okay. That's okay. It's been a long night. We got, we got a lot done, we did do it.
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Chair, two comments. First comment is, I think Shaker Mill Pond went well, all things considered. And feel free to thank Mr. Aho for doing the patches, where he did the horizontal directional drilling. He came back, did the righteous thing, he fixed those patches, and that road is now, it's not perfect, because it was cut into, but there was a, almost a one-inch depression on the first, they're going to depress, he came back and he fixed it. Looks really, really great, number one. If I may, a second thing, congratulations Danny for standing up in front of the town meeting, doing such a good job last night.
Thank you.
Yes.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Excellent.
It was thrilling.
I thought so. Reading the MGL.
You did a pretty good job.
Any other project status?
No, that's it for project status.
We just wanna bring up two, two meeting dates.
Yes, so on, right now, choose, the, the second meeting in November falls on November twenty-eighth, which is the week after Thanksgiving. Does the board want to have a meeting that week or not? Does the board wanna have that off? It's Thanksgiving time, so I know people are away. How does the board feel?
May I ask a question, I'm gonna take a, take a look. Because Thanksgiving, of course, is on Thursday.
Yep.
But if you look to December.
That's another one we'll talk about after.
Well, I kinda wanna put them in the same thing, because if we end up skipping two meetings, we end up jammed, I hate to say it. So that's where the compromise might come. So, we usually, so, twenty-eighth is, you know, that's, hopefully people will be back. But.
December twenty-sixth.
When we get to the second meeting in December, it is.
The Tuesday after Christmas.
Yeah, it's Boxing Day.
Yeah, it's Boxing Day.
So, I would add, I would put that on the table saying, I would prefer to meet in November with the expectation that we're gonna skip one in December?
I'd like that.
That would be my, my preference? So.
So moved. So moved.
Because we have a huge amount of work in front of us, we, we had a continuous, we're going to, if, if these all come in the fourteenth?
Well, so yes, so what, what I'm anticipating for, as of right now, there are no new applications for the fourteenth. Based on our, on, based on my deadlines, because the, unless they get something into me before, on, before Friday, that's my, that's our deadline.
Exactly, so.
No, 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 so, there is, so the five days is for any updated information for an open application. I have a, on the website, I have an actual deadline for each meeting. And that gives us, and the way we have that set up is so that Sam and I have enough time to be able to get out comments, to get everything out to the board, legal notices and all that. So what we, we require, it's, it's three, three Fridays prior to the meeting. Cause that gives us two weeks to run the legal notices and get everything out. So that's why we have those deadlines, and it's on the website.
My head's almost spinning from the organization we are currently living under. But no, but seriously, if we do end up with doing, yes, two oh one, two oh five mess lanes, off our plate for a little while. But.
Harvard is off till February.
And.
Stratton Hill.
Should Stratton Hill come in, and should, I'd forgotten the engineer's name, should they get their stuff together?
McCarty.
McCarty, McCarty, we got a couple pretty busy nights. And, and pushing it off is gonna be a challenge.
What do you guys wanna do?
So I'm hearing, I'm hearing an idea that we would meet on the twenty-eighth after Thanksgiving, because it's actually not the same week, it's, you know, after, it's Thursday, and then it's the Tuesday. And, but, for the meeting in December, right after Christmas, on the twenty-sixth, that one week. I, I'd like to move that we plan on not holding a meeting on December twenty-sixth.
Yep, and, and so just one comment, I think what we can do is, on the fourteenth, if we wanna revisit, if we wanna have that meeting for the twenty-eighth, depending on what we have in for applications, we can revisit it then again.
But I, I just, for all of our family planning, I think that's the right thing to do. I think that's fair, but we can plan that the twenty-sixth, no?
Yes, I will, I know I will not be here, because I, I don't have daycare, but.
They let you out this late without. We don't need to make that, so what do we need to do to cancel, do we need a formal vote or anything?
No, so all that'll happen is, we'll just, on that date, or before, when we post the agenda, we'll just say no meeting.
Okay. Yeah, next meeting, David, and also as a courtesy to Carly, so in case somebody wants something, I think we do that.
Okay, great, I need a couple of quickies, I, I think we can do it under administrative, which is what we're under, right? I brought this up before, and I don't know if it's means and much or not, but I thought in the past, when we opened a hearing, like we did tonight.
Reading the notice?
Yeah.
So this is where, I actually.
The notice, and don't, don't they have an obligation to give us the butter notification tickets?
So she dropped them off to us last week.
Be good for us to just know that, as a procedure, so I thought we should have gone maybe to Danny first. That Danny would kinda summarize it, and say, you know, we got the butter thing, you know, and maybe Jeff reads. Didn't we always read those notices that were, that were in the newspaper before? I remember reading, having them read before.
Does somebody read the newspaper now?
If I may, Mr. Diskin, I think we have been somewhat lackadaisical about being as organized as we are. Now that they seem to have.
Okay, just that.
I think, I think that's probably under advisement.
Yeah, so I can, I can touch on that, and, and so the, the notice, you, you don't have to read it, if you want to, you can. But you don't have to, for open meeting laws, there's no requirement to read that. As long as the legal notice was posted and done properly, that's fine.
Then maybe just a summary.
That could be the saving.
So yes, exactly.
So if I may, if I may ask, and then in your, in your first, one of the first things in your planning report was, legal notice was posted, date, cards were returned, date done.
Okay. And, and so on the, on the green cards for this one, I, since I was out on Friday, because my daughter had conjunctivitis. So, no, I'm good, she's good too. That's why I was out on Friday, so I wasn't here when she dropped off the green cards to Sam, so I didn't know about it until actually this morning, when she updated me on that. And I just forgot to tell the board on that one, so that's on me.
And the other, the only other thought I had is, that the A and R for Third Street might not be that simple. So just, everybody keep that in mind.
Because it's a paper street?
I don't know, we don't know what it is yet.
We were gonna discuss it, I was gonna ask if we could get a copy of the applica, the.
Yes, I, I will, I can send that over to you guys.
Thanks.
I've already done an initial review on it, but I'll send everybody the applica, I mean, the application and the plan.
Save yourself some time, you know, just give it to him first. And you know, if you give it to us, we'll talk about it.
I work loads about half of what it used to be. Unless.
Very good. Motion to adjourn.
Followed.
Motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So moved.
Seconded.
Good night, everybody.